Seeing at 6:00 PM, I'd like to call the April 16, 2025 regular meeting of the Kenai City Council Order. I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening and ask that if you were able to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dothett.
Here.
Councilmember Cassena.
Here.
Mayor Gabriel.
Here.
Councilmember Daniel.
Here.
Councilmember Sodar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Naxted.
Here.
Councilmember Askin.
Here.
Student Representative Tanner.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This evening, we have no lay down before us, so with that, I'll ask for the approval of agenda by Smear Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for approval of the agenda and the consent agenda and request unanimous consent.
Second.
Is there anybody on the body that would like to amend the agenda or consent agenda at this time? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please read the consent agenda into the record.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of April 2, 2025, brought to you by the city clerk. New business. Action approval bills to be ratified, brought to you by the administration. Action approval special use permit to Rebecca Botcher, doing business as the Fishing Grounds LLC for operation of a snack gift shop inside the Kenai Municipal Airport, brought to you by the administration. Action approval special use permit to the State of Alaska Division of Forestry for use of apron space at the Kenai Municipal Airport, brought to you by the administration. Introduction of the following ordinances and scheduling their public hearings for May 7, 2025. Ordnance number 3464-2025, amending Kenai Municipal Code 21.05.085 Airport Fuel Flowage Fee, to remove the set amount in code and instead refer to the annually updated schedule of rates, charges, and fees, brought to you by the administration. Ordnance number 3465-2025, amending Kenai Municipal Code Title II, Alcohol Beverages and Marijuana, standardizing how licenses are reviewed by the city, allowing for administrative non-objection for renewals of existing licenses when no grounds of objection to the renewal are identified. Updating public hearings for protest or conditional non-objections, aligning municipal code with requirements of Alaska statute and other housekeeping amendments, brought to you by the city clerk. Ordnance number 3466-2025, amending Kenai Municipal Code Chapter 4.32 Residential Code to reinstate provisions related to engineering, design, and location, including fire code protection on floors provisions of the 2021 International Residential Code, brought to you by the administration. Ordnance number 3467-2025, accepting and appropriating a grant through the Alaska Animal Control Association to the Kenai Animal Shelter for attendance at the Alaska Animal Control Association 2025 Training Conference, brought to you by the administration. Ordnance number 3468-2025, accepting and appropriating a donation to the Kenai Community Library for the Summer Reading Program 2025, brought to you by the administration. And ordinance number 3469-2025, amending Kenai Municipal Code 1.85.060, Conflicts of Interest Prohibited, to allow municipal officers and city employees to participate in certain sales open to the public through a public process and narrowing the existing prohibitions on purchases to personnel, personal property items, brought to you by Councilmember Dothett. And that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to any item that is on the consent agenda, which was just read into the record? Seeing nobody in chambers or online, we'll bring it back to council for approval of agenda and consent agenda. Unanimous consent was requested considering objection. Seeing none, the agenda and consent agenda is approved. That brings us to item B, Scheduled Administrator Reports. This evening, we have fiscal year 2024 Audit Report, Principal Assurance Practice Leader with Joy Mariner with BDO USA. Thank you, Joy. Good to see you here this evening. Yeah, absolutely.
Hi, everyone. That's better. Joy Mariner, I recognize most of the faces here, but I serve as the lead partner on the audit for the city of Kenai. And here to present the results of the 2024 audit, the 2024 audit was issued at the end of March, just in time for the federal deadline. And so you are complying on that front. And I'd like to go over just a few quick highlights of the results of the audit that you should have in your packets. And then we'll look at a very few key highlights on the financial statements themselves. So we do work for you as the council. I meet with the mayor when we're here in person. We talk about the types of risks that the financial statements might have associated with them and the types of activities that you're doing. And then for you, we actually complete multiple audits. The audit of the financial statements, which should look like this to you and your packets. And then we also perform an audit of your compliance in accordance with the federal grant awards that you received. So let's look really quickly at the status of the audit and the summary there is on page seven of this PDF. I promised I would not walk through every page of everything. So if you could go to page seven there. Do I need to do that with this? Okay. Nope. There we go. So at a very high level, I know the words here are small, but I just want to remind people the objective of our audit on this first tab here is to obtain reasonable rather than absolute assurance. So we don't go through and form an opinion on every single number in the financials. We're looking to make sure the financial statements are materially correct and that our work is reasonable assurance. So we're looking at riskier areas more closely. We look at certain balances in 100%. For example, debt or cash investments, we confirm those directly with your banking institutions. And then other things, we pick samples, like for example, with your payroll or your expenditures, we're going to look at the samples. We also pick certain dollar values that might be riskier. So if you're doing construction, we're going to use statistical sampling that would allow us to pick the bigger dollar items more likely. And then all of these things result in us forming an opinion. And the third bullet point here, you can notice we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's a clean opinion. It's what you, as the council, would want to see on your financials. So congratulations to your team here for a clean audit opinion on the financial statements. We also review internal controls, and we'll look at those in just a minute as part of our audit. And then the next bullet point is related to your compliance, and that's this bullet point. This doesn't, I'm not sure if that works. But anyway, we did issue an unmodified or clean opinion on your federal awards and your compliance with your federal awards. Overall, you had $1.66 million of expenditures on your federal awards this year. We added your airport improvement program. Total expenditures on that program were 1.56 million. So almost, you know, majority of your federal awards come through AIP. And this year, most of those costs were for the sand SRE storage building grant. So we did audit the costs associated with all of the airport improvement project programs, but specifically that one was the largest. And we didn't identify any findings related to the audit of that federal program this year. I just want to thank your team here. Lots of questions. An audit is a very in-depth process. We start, you know, months before the ending. It lasts for multiple months. And Dave and his team did a great job being responsive, getting us the information that we needed and working through some of the challenges an audit can bring. So let's next move along to internal control. I mentioned that internal control is an important part of your audit. We don't audit your internal controls per se. We are required to understand them. So I'm on page 12 of that report, if you're following along. Internal controls are those checks and balances in place to make sure your financial information is accurate during the year. So for example, you would want a second set of eyes on a check. We're not just one person cutting a check. You'd want a check signer approving it, or a bank reconciliation being done regularly throughout the year. And so we look to make sure those controls are adequately designed and then implemented during the year if we think they're important controls. And there's two items that we did identify this year that I do want to discuss with you at a high level. Again, I apologize, these are small. If you received the single audit report, you can find more detail on these in that report. If you want more, you know, each one of them has a whole page dedicated to them. If you want bigger font, but also more information here. And I just want to mention that none of these are numbers that are reported incorrectly in the financial statements that you received. The final financial statements reflect the correct balances, and your team has worked to make sure that the financial statements are accurate. This is really more of a design of the process for how these transactions are handled. So the first one relates to leases. If you remember, a couple of years ago, you implemented leases for the first time. And it means that all the city's leases have to go onto the books and records, the largest being at the airport. And there were some adjustments to your airport leases this year in the airport special revenue fund that did result in some audit adjustments. And so our recommendation there is that there's multiple people here at the city who are trained in the accounting for leases. And there's another level of review before it gets to the auditor. So that's being tracked during the year properly. We're not talking about big dollar amount numbers. You know, the actual overall, the majority of the airport leases were being accounted for correctly, but ultimately ended up in a change to the airport special revenue fund financial statements. And the second item relates to segregation of duties. So you may not be aware, but the city did experience certain turnover over the last couple of years in the finance department. And when some of this has been going on, the permissions of who has access to your IT systems and who has access to your banking systems have been adjusted as people have come and left the city. So at the end of the day, there are certain permission levels that just create risk for the city. Now, when we do our audit, we look to make sure there weren't any transactions that were a problem, that there weren't any misappropriation of assets. We're looking specifically for those things and didn't find anything that was a concern. So I do want you to just hear me on that. This is a design of the way your IT system is actually set up, that there are certain users, and this has probably already been corrected, who have permission levels that are too high in either your banking system or your IT system at the city. So our recommendation there is this, somebody's monitoring that more frequently. And when someone leaves, their permissions are changed again, that you're looking to see who has the ability to sign checks, and is it appropriate that they can sign checks. And so I know your team's already looking pretty carefully to see how that will work. And as a new employee comes on or as somebody leaves, to make sure that that adjustment is made in a timely manner. Do you have any questions on those two items? Or we look at a few other things?
Any questions? I guess on this, sorry, I guess on the second one I do have, was this something that was changed year from the year prior, or was it just?
So the short answer is partially, enough that it was a concern this year. So what we look at are who has access to sign checks, then who has access to your IT system as an administrative level access. We call that super user access, just because it sounds more fun. But who is the super user in the system? They can do pretty much whatever they want. And then, you know, combine that with who has access to your actual check stock. So can somebody, you know, do all of the things together and have the ability to do that without, you know, somebody catching it quickly enough, I guess, is the thing I would say. So some of those things did not change, and others did change such that there were certain individuals who had all three.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to, there are a couple of other areas that we communicated as management letter comments. Those aren't things that we just brought, you know, bring formally to your attention related to capital asset disposals and the financial statement close process. But there was significant work that we did, you know, outside of the regular course of the audit in these two areas. And so we wanted to make sure to bring that to your attention. Just so you're aware, from a management level perspective, we're working with your team on how to correct some of those areas as you move forward, even if we don't report them as a significant deficiency or a material weakness. So the other thing I'll just kind of mention is that you did adopt a new accounting standard this year. It really had very little impact to you, but GASB statement 100 is in effect this year. And there was a change in your major funds presented in the financial statement. So that was a minor change that was implemented because of GASB 100. Otherwise, there really is not an impact to the standard that got implemented. And then one thing I'll mention before we move on is that in, on this tab here, you can see there's some estimates noted for you. When we look at the financial statements, just know that most of the numbers in here are actual numbers, meaning you know how much you paid somebody in payroll, you know what's in a bank account, you know, you know, how much cash you received from this customer. That being said, some of your numbers in the statements are estimates. And I bring those to your attention just because those numbers can change depending on what, you know, either consultants or the state or you think. So for example, the collectability of receivables, how collectible are you, how likely is it for you to be able to collect that bill? You book something called an allowance for collectability. Or depreciation is a really big one. Your fixed assets, your property and equipment is your largest asset here at the city, and you're depreciating that based on an estimated useful life. So it'd be different for a building than it is for a vehicle. And then the only other one I'll mention is the pension liability and the pension assets. Those are established by the state. You don't get to make the decision of what those estimates are. They hire an actuary. So that'll be your biggest liability when we look at your statements. So let's do that. Can we go to the other PDF, the financial statements? This one. Well, if you have it in the binder version, that's how I, I'm just, so we don't have that on the packet. Okay. It's probably on your website. So you can look on there and refer to it later. I'll give you an overview if you have your packet with you. So I always like to start with the table of contents and remind you what you have available to see. Just, I'm only going to cover a couple of these, just a couple pages in the statements. So to a very high level, you do have the introductory section. So if you're going to talk to somebody about what your city is, what it does, how long you've been around, this, the letter of transmittal in the table of contents that's listed here, the letter of transmittal is a good overview of the city and what's going on at the city. So that's really good talking points if you're, you know, at a conference or meeting with your neighbor and they're new to town, give them this information about what is the city of Kenai. There's also an organizational chart and a list of principal officials where you can see kind of the people that run the city. And then our auditors report, which I've already covered the results of that. So we're not going to look at the audited report. And then next up is the management discussion and analysis. And that starts on page seven. I always encourage people to read that on your own time. So if you don't have a copy of this report right now, don't worry, because you can always start on page seven, read a few pages. And it's not that long. The management discussion analysis gives you a summary look at like the, over two years, what are the financial statements and the highlights of the statements for the city. So there's financial highlights for you. You can see how net position changed, how your revenues and expenses changed. And there's a lot of narrative that your team prepares around the numbers for the city and what's been going on. So if you only read eight pages, those are the eight pages to read. Next up, I want to just touch on is on page 20. So this is your statement of net position. And the statement of net position at a very high level just shows you what the city owns and what it owes to others. So if you're following along with me, you can see things called assets. Assets are just things the city owns. So that's your bank accounts, your cash, your investments, your vehicles, your buildings, all of those different things. Your total assets at the end of the year, $246.5 million. Majority of that is held in property and equipment, including construction in progress, as well as equity and central treasury, which is what we call cash and investments. Your total liabilities, things that you owe to others, have $19.9 million, the biggest one there being a $13.9 million net pension liability. That's the state pension. You can't pay it off. You can, it's considered a long-term liability, but it's not long-term debt. So I just want to kind of emphasize that with you. And then your total bonds, you can see there, you know, some small amount there. I think your total long-term debt there right now is only $665,000 at the end of the year. And then there's a few other deferred outflows related to leases and pensions that affect your equity. And at the end of the day, when you take all the things you own, back out everything you owe to others, your net position is what we call equity at a, at a city. So if you own a private company, this is your equity, shareholders equity or owner's equity, total of $222.2 million, $3 million of which is in your business type activities for congregate housing. So let's look a little bit at the results for the year. So again, if you're following along with me on page 24, nope, I apologize, 28. This is going to show you the results for each of your major funds. You do have, Parks and Rec is not a major fund in '24, so that fell off as a major fund, and so did the Airport Improvement Capital Project Fund. So they were reported as major in the prior year, but they aren't major. So they don't get their own column this year. If you want that information, you can go to the back and find out lots more information about these funds. But overall, on the general fund, you can see the change in fund balance to the positive of $990,000. I would like to point out that your investment income was $923,000. So a large portion of that is related to the change in investments. If you've looked at your stocks over the last month, that number might be a little bit different right now. So I'd kind of hold that number with a little bit of hesitation right now because it's just moving around a lot. But overall, you know, I think overall to budget, you were definitely in a positive situation to budget, not overspend, and you did recover what you were expecting in revenue, even if you back out those investment. So I just want to point that out. And then when you look at your Congregate Housing Fund on page 32, you can see Congregate Housing is operating also in the black, total change in net position this year of $6,000. So, you know, just in the black. But that, again, is largely related to investments. Congregate Housing is overall operating at a loss, but keep in mind that it has depreciation of about $140,000. So right now, you're not charging enough to replace the building at its original cost. So you're also not charging enough to replace the building at whatever it would cost when it needs replaced. So just keep that in the back of your mind, but it is cash flow positive right now at Congregate Housing. This year, about $100,000 cash flow positive. And those are the main statements I wanted to cover. I do want, if you can flip back with me to the table of contents, I just want to highlight for you that there's a lot of other information here. So on the second page of the table of contents, you have a bunch of information about your non-major governmental. So if you want to see how the airport's doing or how your different Parks and Recs are doing, if you want to see that. There's also budget to actuals for all of them. So if you want to actually see how you compare to budget, this is a great thing to do on a Saturday night when you're trying to fall asleep. It's really good reading material. But my favorite part of the statements is something I don't even audit, and that's your statistical section. I just want to highlight that because it takes your team a lot of time. But it's 10 years largely, a lot of these statistics are 10 years of information for you. So if you just want to see historically what's been going on at the city and trends, those statistical tables in the back are invaluable. But it also gives you information about your tax revenues by source, your ratios of debt, principal employers here in the city, and your full-time equivalent employees here also. So really good information for you if you're just kind of getting some statistics about your city that you want to be tracking. Again, I don't audit them, but I do make sure they tie to the financial statements, and so they do that. I just want to conclude by thanking you for your time. Hopefully, I haven't taken too much of it, Mr. Mayor. And I'm happy to answer any specific questions if you've had a chance to look at the statements. It's been a couple of weeks since we issued them. So I'm happy to answer any questions and just want to thank Dave and Terry and their teams for all the hard work that goes into this beast of a report.
Thank you. Any questions on Ms. Mariner? Wow. Sounds like you covered everything very well.
I tried.
Oh, go ahead.
It's just a lot to soak in.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the clean audit part, that's, I think, like, the takeaway, right?
Yeah, I think, you know, when, at the end of the day, you want your financial statements to be reliable. So having a clean audit opinion means that your citizens here can rely on this information to make decisions, and so can you as councilmembers. And that's imperative.
There you go. As usual, appreciate you coming down and presenting to us and the work you do for us, Joy. Council, we're now on item C, Scheduled Public Comments. This evening, we have first up, we have two actually this evening. The first up, we have the Boys and Girls Club of the Kenai Peninsula with the Chief Executive Officer, Ms. Jeanette Wick.
Hi. So I came with, I probably don't need that, with the admin team, Michelle and Jackie, and then, oh, we've got a couple more. August from our teen center with six of the teens that attend regularly. I know you guys have this. You got this in your packet. Some of the things that is really fascinating for me is to actually pull out the clubs individually because overall, we served 68,000 males. But to look at our teen center, and when we compare our teen center and the tweens that we serve, not only statewide, but national, and we stand out. I mean, we're serving probably on the average of 30 more teens than they do. And this is Anchorage, and we compare to Washington, California. We just have a very robust programming, and a lot of that, Jared's been with us 25 years. And then with the addition of August, in the last couple of months, we've been able to get the kids out. They went to the food bank, Salvation Army. They've been going over to the clubhouse and mentoring the younger youth. And what that does is it builds that, probably a little bit of that relationship to where they'll want to continue to be a part of this programming. I know upwards throughout the year, he can see anywhere from 50 to 80 kids, even though his average is a little bit lower. Obviously, as expected during middle school sports, basketball, wrestling, volleyball, not so much your high school sports, you'll see a little bit of drop in his numbers. We got this last year, my wheelhouse is grant writing this last year, we've managed to accumulate a Gary Wentt grant at 25,000, a TLC, which is a Think, Learn, and Create, which is an NFL grant for 25,000, most recently, OJJDP. We obviously received the food grant, which you can see by your budget. Some of the things we are working on is to try to find additional funding as we operate extremely in the red. We don't charge a membership fee for our teens. And then we do it other programs. One of the things that August has been bringing is probably a little bit of strength in the grant measurables to making sure that what they, what we said we would do, they're doing. And my favorite is the new TLC, which gives them, and the project they chose was mental health, mental wellness. And so they're going to spend the summer at the Wednesday markets promoting kind of a mental wellness awareness. a mental wellness awareness. So, yeah, I mean, for me, I want to thank you guys or for our team. Thank you guys for the continued support that we receive from the city, from the in-kind, from the use of the facility to utilities, the $10,000 we receive annually. I know for me, the going in there, and I highly recommend for you to stop by that teen center. One of the greatest things is to walk in and you'll see they immediately feel comfortable. They drop their bags, they go to their areas, and it's busy. It's loud, and it's fun. And for me, that's, I grew up on the peninsula, been here way too long, over 50 years, and that teen center is a different building than it was then. And I take a lot of pride in that, and the staff that are over there, they build some good relationships and trust relationships with the youth, and I can't imagine not having a place for them to go, not only after school, but during the summer. So, are there any questions?
Questions of Ms. Wick? Vice Mayor, next one.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight and to see you again. But I do know that you've got, it's either an open house or something coming up in May for the facility. I don't think you mentioned any of that. Do you want to talk about that?
No, I was just focusing on the teens. So, yeah, I can plug that in. We have, again, I've been with Boys and Girls Club for 22 years, started out in Akiski as a director, and this has been a pipe dream for a very long time. So for us, when Melba and Royce Roberts left us this funding, it kind of catapulted. It just, it springboarded a lot of opportunities. We were able to secure Murkowski funding for $4.675 million, Rasmussen, there's just been, and most recently Murdoch. So we are going to have finally our forever home. We started clearing the land that you guys donated. The clubhouse is, got its windows in. So if you ever just want to drive by, our childcare center opened up August 1st, so May 17th from 3:00 to 5:00, we have an open house. A lot of mail or flyers went out. I know I emailed the council, and one of the things that you can do anytime is if I'm in there, pop in and I'd be happy to walk you through and give you a little bit of a tour. The gym floor, which I'm extremely excited about, is curing, so I think tomorrow I get to be the first to dribble the basketball on the court. And it's a regular-sized gym, high school, so it's got, we can do a lot with that. We did actually sink some volleyball holes into there. There's, sometimes that can be, for those of us whose kids who participate in the comp volleyball, we're so limited on our space. So we were really trying to create a facility that we can operate almost seven days a week to where we can do rentals, accommodate some of the schools. Our own programming right now, we're struggling to find space for our indoor soccer. The childcare center is 33, so we only have availability of nine more spots, and I think we've got a waitlist with our infants. The clubhouse sizes over 7,000 square feet, three very large classrooms. And again, we designed that to where we can do a morning program for a lot of parents who either work the refinery, the hospital. We can open up our doors at 6:30 in the morning, bus can come in and get our kids. We can run a preschool in that building along with the embedded preschool in our childcare center. I want to partner a little bit with homeschool connections and for during the school day, when our building is empty in the childcare, we can start, or the clubhouse, we can start to build these partnerships and have another community kind of hub where it's just operating constantly. So I would love for you guys to come by, and if you can't come by, an open house, I'd be happy to walk you through. It's a little muddy in the clubhouse, it's still muddy, and, but it'd be fun to walk through and show you.
Further questions of Ms. Wick? Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Ms. Gabriel. Thank you again, Ms. Wick, for coming tonight. It's really exciting to hear the, what's all going on at the clubhouse and the teen center specifically. A question in regard to the teen center with the, all the changes going on and all the construction and the expansion to clubhouse. Are you guys going to keep the teen center in the rec building? Are you going to move it, or is there plans? Just curious.
And with over at the teen center and kind of met with the TLC group, and a lot of their questions are very valid, right? You don't want to just put them in this big space, like a portable or anything. And so financially, we have to put that into consideration on the cost of the building. It would make sense to kind of combine it all, but is that fair to teens to be in with younger kids? They had a lot of really good questions, and some of them were, are we in the same building, are we attached, or what does that look like? And I want their voice to be heard. I think ultimately, in the, in the end game, that would be a great kind of serving kids from eight weeks to 18 on one campus. With the property, you have the ability to garden and greenhouse, and then with our commercial kitchen, we can do some serious life skills or culinary and work with partners to get these kids ready for life after high school. And so ultimately, I would love that right now, we'll probably bring them over in the van, let them use the kitchen, let them participate in some of these just enrichment, enrichment activities that can enhance their life skills. But I don't know if I'll see it in my lifetime. I think that we have repaired the building to where there is a central, and I'm learning more about construction than I ever wanted to, just to be honest, there's this central piece where you can, Dan Green has it, so we can add on to the teen center. There's a lot of costs that's involved in that, but for me, I would like it all to be on one campus eventually, yes.
Counselor Kassana.
Thank you. I wanted to thank you for coming and presenting this. I think it's great information. I think we would all agree. With that, I just wanted to ask if, thanking the teens for showing up to this. I know sitting through a BDO, Financial Audit Report's not the most exciting thing to sit through, so thanks for coming and just ask if there's anything you wanted to share, please come up and share what might be important to you about this as well. No obligation.
I did promise them they didn't have to talk. I did look over a few times at my coworkers, and I was like, oh my gosh, they're probably rock, paper, scissors mad at me right now. I think the important thing is to just see that this is a small percentage and representation of our youth that are over. You want to come up? They're, they're two of our TLC, of our small group of TLC kids, and they're the ones that I did get to go talk to.
I'm very impressed.
Yeah, just give your, if you would, just give your name for the record before you start, that would be great.
Hi, my name's Isabella Shannon. I go to the Key9 teen center, I'm 13. I want to speak about how the Key9 teen center, they hire staff that really helps us get to know each other. They're always, especially when there's new people, they always make it seem very welcoming, and they help us get to know other people. When people are feeling upset, they give us breaks. It's a really good learning environment. I like how the Key9 teen center sets up, how we have homework time from a specific time to a different time, so that everyone can go there and get their work done. We also get served really good food, and it's not like just randomized, it's not just like, oh, here's a bag of chips. It's like, they actually put a lot of effort into our well-being, and I really appreciate that. I think the Key9 teen center is a really good place to be, and they really, it's not something, they don't like mainly focus on like mental health, but like, it's definitely in that environment, it feels very safe to be yourself, especially whether you're struggling or not.
You were just a little hard.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
I just want to say, if I had your ability to be at that age, and I am 50-something, and I got nervous coming up here, I am extremely impressed. And again, I, everything she talks about, you can see that when you go there, you feel it when you go there, and it is, I believe, 100% the staff that are working there, so.
Any further questions, comments? Yeah, I just, oh, Counselor, Vice Mayor, next one.
Thank you, Eric. One more question, but actually, I've, I've always liked to, my family and I donate to your club, but there's something that you have going on right now that I think is really cool.
You're making me do my homework, right? I'm sorry.
No, I don't, because you helped me with my credit card the other day. For $50, I think it's a plaque that goes on the wall, you get a name, you know, it's a donation, and could you elaborate on that a little bit? And what the process is of people?
Yeah, again, I came here just wanting to really kind of talk about our teens. I have no problem going into this. Our capital campaign has pushed out, and so we have the ability, put a family and friends and family wall, and they're like a little four-by-four, and it will go, kind of when you come into there, we also have the bigger donor wall, which goes anywhere from 500 to 10,000 or 25,000, and then beyond that, we have the bigger wall put up there. I think for me, I would like 100% of either anybody we have had the pleasure of working with, from our past staff to our families to every, Michelle and I, and we were talking about wanting every club's families to have something on that wall. Because, again, I've been here a long time, I could name so many, all the way back from Suzanne Little to Kim Lee to Kim Damp, and there's a reason that we are here right now. So to be able to go in and have their names on that wall and to acknowledge all of the families that have come through these doors, all the people I've had the pleasure of working with, I think it's an opportunity to have a permanent, and it's indoors, it won't get beat up, and, well, it will have to be kid-proof because this entranceway, if you ever played any sport with us at a Royal, especially, you have about 50 kids just all over there. So our goal is to make this space kid-friendly. So everything, I've kind of rethought how we want the designs to look. I want something flat to the wall that they can't grab and try to climb. But again, we do have that going out, we have that on our, I believe it's on our Facebook, it is on our website, and we're bgckp.org, it is on your packet. And we already, I think Jeff Delica at the helm made sure, I think within 24 hours, we had over 80 of people that had reached out and had requested, either from the $50 all the way up to around 10,000. It just shows again the support for what we do in our community, and kudos to all the staff because they make it what it is and why people want to support it. Any other questions?
I just want to say, yeah, thanks for all you do over there. Well, I'm excited, and I love your work, I've heard the word campus, which I really like that, seems like it's, you know, the plan to expand that out to provide, you know, more activities and be, you know, activities for the kids of different ages and that sort of thing. Now, I've got, all my grandkids are in soccer, so I see what goes on there with indoor and outdoor soccer. It's amazing the amount of kids that, you know, participate. But I'm excited about the campus here and the grand opening and what that's going to look like and the plans to build that out. I think we were able to take a situation there with an existing building and partnering with you guys, turn that into something that's going to be really special.
Thank you. And I, we had three over 350 for indoor soccer, and I have grandchildren now, and so this campus and these programming really does mean a lot to me. I do think for the community as well, growing up here to have something where we do more than just after school and more than summer camps, that we're providing other programs within the community and really serving our teens by getting them skills. This kitchen is beautiful, it's mirrored to the Saldana Catholic Church kitchen. So the space, and we should be pushing out about 200 meals a day between the childcare center, the teen center, we deliver from our current location, and our clubhouse, that's a lot of meals coming out, and so, yeah, it's great to be a part of all of this right now.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Wick. Appreciate that.
Any others? All right, thank you.
Under scheduled public comments, we do have another group here. We have Central Area Rural Transit System, or CARTS, with Board of Directors Secretary Linda Hutchings and Executive Director Jessica Schultz, who I see. It does not look like Linda Hutchings.
I grew a little bit. Good evening. I know most of you, Tim Dillon, resident here of Kenai, and the president of the Board of Directors for CARTS, the new CARTS. 2005, I moved with my family here to Kenai. I came to be able to run the Arctic Winter Games. My first meeting I went to was a Transportation Committee meeting. I walked out of that meeting, got in my vehicle, drove over to the Borough Building, walked into Dale Bagley's office, closed the door, and I said, Dale, what did you get me into? And his comment to me was, Tim, that's just CARTS. Just work around them, and you guys will be fine. Well, as most of you know, I retired a year and a half ago, and one of the things that I had promised some folks was that I was going to help CARTS. So 12 months ago, we made a change in Executive Director, we've got a great new Board of Directors, we've got a new CFO, and I am very, very pleased to reintroduce you to Jessica Schultz, our Executive Director, to talk to you a little bit about the new CARTS and what we've been up to. Thank you. Jess?
Thank you, Tim. Good evening, everyone. Could you pull up the slideshow, please? It's okay. I have a lot to update everybody with, so I'm going to talk quick, hopefully not too quick. I'd like to start, there we go, it's kind of cut off. I'd like to start with a quick overview of CARTS and the service we provide. CARTS offers door-to-door demand response transportation, making it possible for residents across our service area to get where they need to go, whether that means they're going to a medical appointment, work, or grocery shopping. Ride reservations are typically made by 5:00 PM the business day before, which helps us coordinate scheduling and ensure reliability for our riders. We operate Monday through Saturday 24 hours a day to meet the various needs of our community, especially those that rely on us for really early morning and late-night transportation. There are 15 different service zones, and customers are charged by how many zones they travel through to get to their destination. It's also worth noting that the customer fare only covers about 15% of the true cost of the ride. Because of that, our program relies heavily on funding from federal, state, and local sources. Currently, we have 15 staff members and operate eight dedicated vehicles. We also contract with Alaska Cab, who provides additional service when ride demand exceeds what we can fit on our dedicated fleet. Let's see, the CARTS Board is welcoming new voices and expanding its reach, guiding the organization into its next phase of growth. We now have the largest member, the largest number of board members since CARTS was founded. We are pleased to welcome Linda Hutchings as our new treasurer, and then we also have Glenise Petty, who was here earlier, as a new board member. The CARTS Board is enthusiastic and optimistic about the future, with expansion and continued growth remaining a top priority. We've begun conversations with individuals in Homer and Seward to better understand their transportation needs with the goal of adding representatives from each city to our board. This will help ensure their voices are included as we plan for the future and work towards peninsula-wide service. Ridership data for '24, the program experienced significant growth with a 21% increase and delivering nearly 36,000 rides. This increase in ridership highlights the essential role CARTS plays in our community, especially in supporting workforce transportation. Currently, 66% of our ridership uses CARTS to get to and from their job, emphasizing how critical our services are for ensuring employment access and promoting economic stability throughout the central peninsula. The city of Kenai represents 39% of all of our drop-offs, making it the most traveled-to destination within our service area. Given the majority of these trips are employment-related, CARTS clearly serves as a key connector in Kenai's economic development, linking residents to jobs and helping sustain a strong, reliable, local workforce. All right. CARTS has not only experienced a surge in ridership, but we have also made significant strides in improving on-time performance. In '24, our on-time performance rate exceeded 90%, which is way better than years prior, reflecting the positive impact of recent operational enhancements. There are a couple of key contributing factors to the operations, and it includes, we expanded the driving staff, we upgraded communication equipment, the implementation of new dispatching software, and the launch of a user-friendly mobile app. Additionally, CARTS leveraged the city of Kenai's $5,000 contribution as the required match funds for the new dispatching software, highlighting the importance of strategic partnerships. Kenai's investment in the CARTS program has been a key driver in our growth and continued Just a quick overview of our funding. Our budget is made up of federal, state, and local funds, like I mentioned earlier, with nearly 75% coming from federal sources, and then the remaining 25% from local funds. With an operating budget of roughly $1.2 million, we need about $310,000 in local match. We currently have a shortfall of $125,000, which means we're unable to access nearly $190,000 in federal funds. This results in a total shortfall of $312,000, which directly impacts our operating budget This results in a total shortfall of $312,000, which directly impacts our operating budget and affects critical expenses like driver wages, vehicle fuel, and paying our contract provider. CARTS is actively seeking alternative funding sources and exploring new ideas that we haven't necessarily considered in prior years, in effort to bridge the gap. All right. In '24, we had lots of accomplishments, so I was just taking the ones that I thought were most important to note. I'm happy to say we have officially delivered 1 million rides since we started in 2001. We expanded our service hours to include Saturday service. We have a 24/7 answering service, so at any given time, if you have a question about your reservation, somebody is there to answer the phone and help you. We have 11 full-time drivers, which is the most that we've seen in nearly 10 years. We have a newly appointed Finance and Operations Officer. We have three new accessible vehicles coming that we're anticipating hopefully to be here by September. The launch of the new dispatching software and mobile app. And then we also have new equipment to monitor vehicle telematics, maintenance, and overall safety. CARTS Community Partnership Network continues to grow and strengthen with a focus on collaboration and expanding services. In '24, we're excited to announce several new key partnerships, one being the city of Kenai, the city of Saldana. We worked with multiple partner agencies with the opioid grant, delivering free rides to individuals that needed the help. The Kenai Peninsula Borough, and then Aurora Integrated Oncology. These growing partnerships are essential to CARTS' mission, helping us serve our community better and expanding the reach and impact of our services. All right. So in the 13 years that I've been with CARTS, I can confidently say that '24 was by far our most successful year. As noted earlier, one of the key contributing factors to our overall success was the launch of our new dispatching software and the mobile app, a major improvement that was made possible in part to funding support from the Kenai of Saldana, or the Kenai, city of Kenai. I'm sorry about that. This year, CARTS is requesting a $10,000 contribution from the city of Kenai to serve as the local match source. These funds will be specifically dedicated to cover the required match for our dispatching software and our mobile app. By supporting this portion of the project, other resources can be redirected towards the local match required for critical operating expenses such as the driver wages and the vehicle fuel and maintenance and everything else. This continued partnership represents a direct investment by the city of Kenai in the success and sustainability of CARTS, ensuring we can maintain and expand the essential transportation services our community depends on. And with that, thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Any questions for Councilmember Dalton?
I do have, I know the Kenai Indian Tribe was on there and they've been talking about new buses coming in and their busing network. Has there been any further movement with you guys working together on that project?
There wasn't a temp for us to possibly help them out with their ADA paratransit services. That was one service that they were unaware that they had to provide, being that it was a fixed route. But as of right now, no. We currently work with them to help transport their individuals. Even though they have over 60 vehicles, that's not enough resources for them. So Kenai C purchases transportation through us.
One of the other things that we're working on right now is when you look at the cost, Jess mentioned earlier that, you know, the cost that we charge somebody doesn't match up with the actual cost. We actually were in Peter Machiki's office this past Monday, I think it was, explaining to him about the opioid grant that exists and how it doesn't even come anywhere close to, you know, providing, you know, we provide the services, but we wind up eating it a lot of the time because the dollars aren't there. So that's another part with us hiring a CFO that's really been helpful. And I've got to say, with Lynda Hutchings and her experience with some of the grants and things, being able to look at things and seeing what the indirect costs are and all. We've got a long way to go. We've come an awful long way this past year. And I thank you all very much for, that $5,000 did an awful lot for us this past year because that software and somebody being able to call 24/7, the Saturday rides, those are huge things. Those are things that people have been asking for for the last 15, 20 years. And I'm hoping that this time next year, I'll be back to tell you what we were able to accomplish with your $10,000 investment from this year. So thank you all very much for tonight.
Thank you. Any further questions? Vice Mayor Nixon?
Thank you. Just two questions, really. This might be more for Tim because it has the history and I could find out through our city. But what have we donated historically?
It's my understanding, in the last six, eight years, besides this last year, you hadn't participated at all. But then again, no one was participating. I think everybody had come to the table and said, you know, customer service has to be taken care of. You need to fix your problem. And at that point, the Board and the administration of CARTS chose not to do that. So I really can't tell you how much was in it before that. Terry, you may have an idea, but I honestly don't have a good answer for you. But we can review that, you know, and look at it for you if you want.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember. It's been a while, pre-COVID and all of that. The other general question is, is the cost within a zone, it was $2 and change. And just generally, how did you come up with that? It seems, and it seems a little low, but maybe that's the right number. How does that work?
It's interesting that you brought that up because that's something that we're looking into. Back when CARTS started, that was, they brought in a consultant to take a look at what's the best way to charge for this kind of a program. And they came up with the zones. We've actually talked at the last several board meetings about putting together an ad hoc committee of people across the Kenai Peninsula to help us look at that and see what makes sense. In fact, there's a person sitting up there as a council member that knows the roads fairly well because of his company that he owns, that is actually on our shortlist of somebody we were going to ask to serve on that ad hoc committee. Because we don't know what the right answer is, Henry. You know, this is what we were given. And put it this way, if it doesn't pay the bills, we have to adjust some things. The problem is that we don't want to compete with for-profit businesses and be taking away from them. And that's why we've been really careful, like, working closely with Brent Hibbert when Brent owned Alaska Cab and now Taylor. And also having the discussions we've had down in Homer and over in Seward because there's plenty of opportunity for everybody. But what that, what that charge should be, we don't have a good handle on it right now, Henry. I'm not going to lie to you. We don't. But we do have an ad hoc committee that we're trying to put together. Hi, Alex.
Councilmember Kusana?
Yeah, I was just curious if there were ways for other members of the public to donate to CARTS or provide some funding matches of their own.
That was something that we were just starting to look into. In fact, at one of the previous board meetings, we finally got all of the paperwork in and taken care of because we are a nonprofit, to be able to apply for the Alaska Lotto and look at things. A lot of those revenue streams, to be honest with you, they were never looked at. And that's why I'm so pleased with the Board, you know, and I see Tyson Cox is here from our Board, too. He's actually our Vice President. You know, I've got some really great people on the Board that understand those things so that Jess can work on the operations side and we can look at the dollars and cents. Because again, the other thing is, most grants, outside of what we did with you guys last year and several other organizations, most of the grants are reimbursables. So you have to find a way to make it work until they send you a check. And I can promise you, and Terry can probably comment on this, the state is not turning things around in 30 days or 45 days. If you get a reimbursement in 90 to 120 days, you're lucky these days. So that's all one of the things we're looking into. But that's all part of the new CARTS.
Councilmember Daniel?
Wow, that's really interesting. I really appreciate you both coming out again and presenting like you did last year. This is great. You mentioned like Seward area and Homer area. There's no other program in that area right now. And so you're trying to expand. Is that what our goal is?
There isn't a program and they've been asking for some help. And in fact, that was one of the ways that I had kind of gotten involved. Right at my end of my career with CAPED, I was involved with the Transportation Committee down in Homer. And so that's part of how we learned about a lot of what their feelings were and what help they needed. The other thing, too, is it's not as easy as just hiring someone from one of the cab companies to help you out. Because of the federal guidelines and all the other things that they have to do in order to be CART certified and not just Alaska Cab certified or Costas or any of the other folks, there's that extra layer that has to happen. So we're trying to assist with that, but we're taking it one step at a time. The first thing was, people really wanted Saturdays. They really wanted Sundays. We're working on Sundays. So if we can do that, and that's why the job Jessica's done as far as recruiting and retention of staff members is huge. We've never had that number of drivers, so.
Further questions? I guess I have one. So if you guys, do you guys ever have like a scenario where you have, you know, you've got a limited number of vehicles and drivers that you, you know, have more demand than you can keep up with? Does that happen?
Yeah. So right now, it's kind of been a struggle because a lot of our vehicles are very old. And there wasn't really a plan put in place for replacing these vehicles. They have over 350,000 miles. I would love to hire more drivers, but due to our vehicle shortage, I can't. We're lucky to have Alaska Cab to take our overflow and they've been a lot of help with these three new vehicles that we have coming. I'm hopeful that we can get one or two more drivers on the road to bring some of that back to our dedicated fleet. But yeah, right now, it's tough.
Okay. Just want to get a kind of a context here of the overall. Appreciate that. Further questions? Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Mr. Dillon, Ms. Hutchings?
Thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Cox, thank you for showing up here and presenting. Council, that brings us to item D, unscheduled public comments. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time on anything that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Please come forward and just give your name and city that you reside in for the record, please. Sorry, could you turn on your microphone there, please? There you go.
Hi. My name is Bobby Crum, C-R-O-O-M. I live in Sterling. I don't really want to be here tonight. I have tried through the spring to work with the city management side to deal with this issue. And as of last week, they said, and the city attorney called me and said, hey, you need to bring this to the council. The council needs to make some decisions. So because of that is why I'm here. I feel that even last year, I tried to resolve some of the issues and was told to go get lost. So with that, KNC has taken over as the golf course new managers. And I take issue because it wasn't very clear because I kept throughout the winter calling, trying to get ahold of the Kenai Golf Course and the phone never answered. And finally, I found out this spring that you guys were even involved in the whole entire scenario. But the reason why I'm here is because of class. I'm disabled. And over the years, we've given price breaks to different classes. The prior people gave classes to slope workers and children and to seniors, but they never gave anything to people with disabilities. And this year, KNC has expanded, has produced that a little bit to just seniors as of today, seniors, single people, and juniors, they get price breaks. And the reason why I bring this up is because last year, the other group, their premium season for a single person would be $900. This year is $1,400 bucks. And when I tried to have the discussion with the operator, the operator was, we're going to be the most expensive on the peninsula. And if you don't got the money, good luck. There's other, and he named off the other golf courses around here. And I don't think that's within what the city council was ever intended for, the fact that people with disabilities would be priced out. And when you tried to have this simple conversation of class, of hey, give us some consideration, it was no. And so I want to kind of break this down so that everybody clearly understands what I'm saying. Yes, there are private golf courses and there's the Kenai City Public Golf Course. And I got to separate it at that point. When I go and I look online and I've played the Russian Jack Spring Golf Course, Russian Jack keeps it very simple. It's like, ladies and gentlemen, a round for their nine, for their nine hole is eight bucks as of today. Their seasonal pass is $150. That puts us at 933% for a seasonal pass over. And when you take Muni and Muni, you know, similar things, that's just out of my, that's more than what I get in disability for a month. And so I find it absolutely just discerning that when you try to go to the, to KNC and say, look, we need to have a conversation and to be told, go, we don't care. If you don't got money, I don't care. You know, this is not for you. I find that absolutely just discerning. And I feel that I have to say this. I think that it's time that the city steps in. The council steps in and suspends their license and says, wait a minute, this is not the way we want the community to be treated. And I'm asking the council to do so immediately, to help and protect people of my class who have disability issues. And that financially, I can't afford these new prices. Even if you pay the daily rate, it's astronomical. I mean, $60 to go play on the weekend. Well, in my budget, that's 15% of what I get. So if I want to go play a round of golf on the weekend, that's 15% of my monthly budget. That's devastating. And that doesn't help. And I don't know how many people would be qualified for a disability pass. I have no knowledge. I don't, I'm not that sophisticated.
Mr. Crum, I'd let you, I've let you kind of go over your limit here, so if you could just ramp up or, okay.
So I just want you guys to understand that there has not been any positive feedback from them. And I feel that I have to ask for your guys' assistance. That's it.
Okay. Questions of Mr., was it Crum?
Yes.
Is that right, Mr. Crum? Questions? I do have a couple. Or did you, do they have a disability pass at Birch Ridge?
No, they do not. They're private.
Yeah, they're private. Okay. I was just curious.
And I will say this, Mayor, is that if you look at Russian Jack, their pass is $150 and they have no class. In other words, they don't give a break to a senior. They don't give a break to a junior. They say it's $8 a round or it's $150. And that's where my argument is, is with them, is that, hey, y'all gave a class. And so because you gave the class, I'm asking for consideration.
I don't know if they're private or public either, but.
No, it's actually ran by the municipality of Anchorage.
Yeah. So we don't run that. We lease the property to them, but they, that's a separate, they manage it and run that, of course. But I would say, just so you know, that when they were here presenting not too long ago, I remember them saying that they were going to offer, they didn't give an amount, but offer a price break for certain times of the, I presume it was during the week, during their what you consider slower times, which I presume would be weekdays, probably mid-morning. So did you discuss with them about what those might look like?
They vaguely, they've mentioned it, but it was just, well, give me an example. And it was just, it was vague. it was just, it was vague. We've not, we've not figured that out.
Okay, I knew they were, they were offering those price breaks.
But I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, people want to make this like it's a business, it's going to make money.
Any further questions of Mr. Croom? Councilor Duffin?
So are there other municip, I don't know of any, are there other golf courses for comparison that are, I mean, I don't want to say subsidized, but basically kind of subsidized by a municipality for their lands that are comparable or?
Russian Jack, the Russian Jack is.
But they're, that's run specifically by the municipality? There's not a separate entity kind of thing?
And I was.
Can you turn your mic on, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. In 2017, Tees for America ran Russian Jack, and they surrendered it back to the city in 2017. And so, but you know, councils are going to have to understand that what y'all are trying to do is harming people like myself. And, and that's my, my point is, is that the contractor that you've hired doesn't care about people with disabilities.
Thank you for testifying before us, Mr. Croom.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda?
Hi, everybody. I'm back from vacation, so I'm happy. Just wanted to bring up a couple of things. I'm super happy to announce that the detour exit only on Desper Highway is working incredibly well. So the speeding is not happening right now, all from it. And I actually, I'll be completely honest, I didn't think that was going to deter it the way it has, but it's working. And so I'm like, so happy. So thank you for working on that. Danielle's working on a digital database of all the artifacts, and we're hoping to have that up and running by the summer. And we've also applied for multiple grants to fix the roof and interior of Moose Beach on Cabin now that we have all the quotes for repairs. So we're just kind of waiting to see where we land with that. Couple of things that aren't necessarily Kenai Chamber, but I think are really important to Kenai. Tomorrow is the caring for the Kenai finalist oral presentations. Those will be starting at 6:00 PM at the Kenai Central High School. If you haven't seen their presentations, they're amazing. I got to help this year by reading some of the essays and being an early judge because I begged to do it and Merrill finally let me. And the ideas are, they like give you hope for the future. So I'm really excited to see the actual presentations tomorrow and got wrangled into volunteering there as well. So, and then also this Saturday, Tremperin is having their open house from noon to 2:00 PM. Obviously, that's a huge deal, too. I got to see it today. It's incredible. I like teared up, like not even involved, and I was just like, it's beautiful. So lots of cool things happening in the area, and summer is just around the corner, so we're just chugging away. Brittany will start her leave for having her baby and other medical stuff starting on Friday. So I'm trying to keep everyone updated with her, and we're doing everything we can to help. And that, oh, and then Kenai Chronicles Beyond the Exhibit is going to be on April 30th at 12:00 PM. That's going to be on education in the Kenai Peninsula, featuring Dr. Cheryl Simers, I believe, who's director of KPC. So that's all I got.
Any questions of Ms. Springer? Thank you for that. Appreciate it. What time, what time is that caring for the Kenai judging again?
I show that the presentations start at 6:00, so I'd probably show up like 5:30.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? A microphone, please.
Apparently, apparently I'm a source of great humor.
You got a nap, so you're feisty here tonight.
Yeah, I'm very happy to have had a nap. I have a hell of a time going to sleep. So at the Kenai Arts Center, it's the usual hours, Wednesday through Saturday, noon to 5:00. And volunteer labor, if you didn't know that. So these are the things that are coming up right now. The, there's a still life show that is, I didn't even notice this before, I apologize. Oh, this is coming up, May 18th. So people like still lifes and that's coming up. What we do, the first Friday reception, the annual, the monthly first Friday reception for the show that's coming along, and that will be the last Friday of the month, or May 2nd. Then the Mother's Day Pottery Sale, always a hit. As you all know, the pottery from our Potter's Guild is extraordinary. It truly is. They do a great, they do great creative work and work really hard at it. So that is also coming along on Saturday, May 10th, 10 to 5:00. And that is always a sellout situation or event. And, you know, they're in there every day cranking away on the wheel or whatever they're doing to make their, their great pieces of pottery. You know, if you've never taken a pottery class, I would forewarn you that you will be hooked on pottery. It is extremely consuming, and it's one of those things you either do or you don't do because it takes so much involvement and dedication to stick with it and create great stuff. So you need to think about that when you look at pottery. It's, a lot goes into it, and it's expensive as heck to, to deal with. How do I know? A past addiction. The other thing that I'm personally involved in as a representative from the Arts Center is the sculptures, the brass sculptures, bear sculptures in the front of the airport with Mary Bondurant and Christine, who are just the and all as far as organizational skills and management skills. And they're doing such a great job. On my end of it, it's just keeping in touch with the Arts Center to extend, to the extent that we'll be able to work with the sculptor who wants to come here and do a workshop. What that will be, I don't know, we don't know. He typically works with brass, not brass, bronze, so he's qualified because he's in Salt Lake City. So we'll see how that works out financially and every other way. I think it's great that he came up with, with the offer to come here and do a workshop of some sort. It won't be bronze. We're kind of fresh out of bronze at the Arts Center and in Kenai. So we'll see what comes out of that. You know, it could be anything. It could be clay, it could be wood, who knows? That's the, the mystery yet to be resolved, but it'll be, it'll be very interesting. And I think that the sculptor or guy will find it extremely interesting to come here and go through the process, whatever that process is, and he'll learn a lot and we'll learn a lot. So that's in the future. And Mary is working so hard at fundraising, and she has done an extraordinary job. So, you know, continue to help them to the extent that we can from the city. Any questions from me?
Any questions of Ms. Nelson?
I would just say that I went to the holiday pottery sale when you, for the, right before Christmas when they're selling, and that was pretty amazing.
The Mother's Day Pottery Sale? Anytime they have a sale, it is, you know, they bring, I don't know why we didn't think about doing this some years ago, but we did not have the Potter's Guild do their big sales in the main gallery, in the, in the show gallery. It's like, duh. So that's where that is, and it fills it up. I mean, they haul in shelves and they, they do a great job of setting it up, and there's such a variety between big bowls to little things and novelty things, as well as very utilitarian things. It's, it's, it's all there. You cannot be unhappy going through that sale and just looking, let alone finding something you might want to buy. Yeah, it's great. That Potter's Guild is, I have to say, it's really an exceptional group. Thanks.
Go for it, Daniel.
Anything else?
Remind me, what day is that pottery sale?
It is, as I look at the info sheet. Thanks for asking. Saturday, May 10th, 10 to 5:00. And you need to get there early. It is always busy. And those who come first choose the best, get the best choice.
Further questions? Vice Mayor Nelson?
Since you keep bringing up pottery, it's, it's something I enjoy, too. It's, it's, it's functional art, and I, I'm going to be there early.
If you want it to be functional art.
Well, it is function, almost all of it is. You know, bowls and, you know.
I beg to differ with you. It is, everything is functional to non-functional, having experienced it myself, that is.
Yeah. Art is in the eye of the beholder, I suppose, right?
Well, most of it is functional. I will admit that. I mean, that's because they know that's what sells, that's what people are looking for. They're looking for the next wonderful bowl, you know, looking for early Christmas presents or birthday presents or whatever. And that is definitely a driver. But there are those of us who like to make non-functional pieces. How do I know?
Councilmember Cassano?
Speaking of the past for me.
I just wanted.
You can't resist.
I just wanted to say thanks for coming every meeting. One of my favorite parts of the meeting every week, or every time. So thanks for being here and giving your, your updates.
Sure.
I just had one comment for you. I did go to the Kenai Peninsula School District. Actually, I had, that was just packed and.
It is so packed, and it has so, this, I really, I said this the last time, it's one of the very best student art shows. And there's one piece I'll just direct your attention to. It's a small watercolor piece called 18 slash 81 or 18 dash 81, whatever it is. It's kind of a genius piece, and it's one of those that you wouldn't, it's pretty light, pretty pale. It shows what I would say is an older woman, it's done in watercolor. She's obviously having a party, but she's the only one that's at the party. She's got a little hat on. I have to guess that she's the 81, and somebody made, somebody 18, or she has a memory of being 18. So it's really quite a thoughtful piece. Quite fascinating that somebody would, somebody, a younger person, I have to assume since it's a school show, put some interest, it's an interesting thought process that went into this. Christianess pointed it out to me, and we both talked about it. I'm still talking about it. I think it's quite genius.
Yeah, definitely some wide array of very good art there.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Marion.
By the way, there's a pretty neat hockey drawing that's in the back gallery, too, that come from some of our North River hockey players. Pretty neat.
Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? See nobody here online. We, I was just going to say, we're about almost an hour and a half in. Let's take a 10-minute break.
You're left alone to discuss this, but what are the other big items that we are looking to do with lift stations? We've got the telemetry we're going to take care of and some lids and things like that. What's are we going to are we expecting something more in the future?
Mr. Yerben.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, so this project's kind of gone full circle. Initially, the appropriations for this were what was done in a single amount for all lift stations. Working with our prior public works director, he singled out four lift stations that he thought were in most need of some improvement, and we directed it to those four specifically. Working with our new public works director, I'm much more comfortable with the direction we're heading now. We're again looking for the flexibility to work within, we have about twenty, twenty lift stations? Eighteen. We have about eighteen lift stations throughout the city. Putting this into a single pot of money is going to allow us to direct our efforts to virtually all eighteen. The primary goal at this point is the aging infrastructure in those that really needs to be addressed is a couple of things. One is the electrical control panels, and Eric could speak to this probably better than I, but I'll if they got detailed questions, I'll let you jump in, Eric. These electrical control panels need to basically be replaced in all eighteen lift stations. And then also with that is to upgrade the communications, the telemetry side of the lift stations. Currently, our staff have to physically go onsite to get their hands and eyes on the lift stations to know exactly what's going on. So, you know, they don't know that a high water alarm going off, they don't know that a pump has failed until they get onsite and actually can take a look at it. You know, by replacing these controls, these electrical panels, replacing and getting the telemetry systems up to date, they will be able to do that remotely and much more effectively managed. So, this is really about rather than just focusing on just four lift stations is doing less to those four, but more to all, and I think we're going to see much more benefit to the operations of the department. Eric, did you want to add anything, or did I get anything wrong? There's a better chance of that.
Other questions? Councilmember Dothan?
Is there, what is the future plan for more for future plans, more immediate future plans for further improvements on the lift stations? I know those were talked about. There were some pretty high numbers for replacement and stuff. Are we just going to retrofit the ones we have? Are we looking at full replacements eventually on some of those? Yes.
Mr. Yerben.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Dothan. I don't know that we're in a position of needing full replacement anywhere. Really, what needs to happen? I mean, the guts of the lift stations are there, you know, they are the concrete bunker, the hole in the ground. You know, the guts to it are pumps, controls, electrical systems, things like that. So, I don't know that we're necessarily looking at, you know, having the total replacements of any of these. There are some that, you know, likely could use expansion. We have some stations that receive a lot of flow. Broad Street, is that the big one in Old Town over there? If we have a pump go out on Broad Street or lose power on Broad Street, and, you know, we have hours to get onsite and deal with it, or things start backing up in other places we don't want them to. That's one of our highest flows. So, that one at some point potentially could use some expansion. But, you know, once we get through what, you know, Director Fry wants to do as prioritized, then it'll be looking and going individually and looking at some other things. You know, the original plan looked at replacing a bunch of pumps. These pumps can be upwards of fifty thousand dollars a pump. We're not looking to replace them right now because they're functioning just fine. We plan to replace them as they break rather than replace working pumps, which I think is a much more efficient use of our funds and will get us a lot more bang for the buck. So, like I said, I'm really in support of the new direction that we're heading, and I think this is best case for right now.
Councilmember Dan.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. A quick question for City Manager. Do we have, do we need to get bids for these projects? So, we have a cost estimate, what it's going to take for each lift station, or is it kind of where we just want to redirect the money now and then go down that road of what the costs are? Do we have an idea? That's what I'm asking, I guess.
Mr. Yerben.
I'll ask Eric if they know an estimated cost, but as far as like procurement and things, once we get the funds in the project, we will go through our normal channels of procurement. It will absolutely be a public bid just because of the volume and the costs that are being involved. But I don't know if you have estimates on panel replacements or anything, Eric?
Obviously, today, we can't guarantee anything.
No, thank you. I was just curious how far we were going to get, if we get them all, or if we only get a few, but it sounds like we'd get almost all of them if it's around that.
Yeah, the hope is definitely to get all the panels, all the guts of the electrical panel replaced in every lift station.
Awesome. Thank you. I like this plan.
Further discussion, comments? United House of Consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number 2025 dash twenty-three is adopted. That brings us to Resolution Number 2025 dash twenty-four, implementing a new fee for a truck fill station permit in the water fees section of the Schedule of Rates, Charges, and Fees. Pleasure, Council. Vice Mayor Necht.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025 dash twenty-four and request unanimous consent. Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number 2025 dash twenty-four? Seeing nobody in chambers or online, we'll bring it back to council. Deliberation from council. Vice Mayor Necht.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager, the approach seems very reasonable. I'm just questioning the two hundred dollars and how that is implemented and if that includes somebody that is, say, building a subdivision and needs lots of water, where they got water trucks, it seems like it wouldn't be enough. Do we have, is it, are we covered, no matter what the project, somebody might be taking water for?
Mr. Yerben.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Necht. Are we covered for every situation? Probably not. I know what the department did was look back for like the last five years at the number of hydrant permits that we issued, and actually the hydrant meters we issued and what the consumption was for that. There were a few projects that were over that will, you know, use more water than, say, two hundred dollars. There were a lot that were far less, too. So, I think what they're trying to do is just really simplify the process for not only themselves, but for the contractors. The other big benefit I just want to highlight is that, you know, utilizing fire hydrants to fill water trucks or flow a lot of water is problematic for a water system. It creates, you know, and Eric, it creates two major problems that I know of. Water hammer, which is when you get a large amount of water moving and then shut it off quickly, it can create what they call water hammer in the system. I think it sounds cool to say water hammer. And the other thing is, is what we're doing right now, and we're getting phone calls every day, is the crews are out flushing hydrants, which is where they flow lots of water to stir up the sediment that builds up in the pipes over time. That's something we have to do periodically to clean the system. But this happens in on hydrants around town that we don't even know about when we issue these water meters to folks to go. So, this is centralizing that in an area over off of Beacon, around the city shop, where it should really minimize the impact on other customers of the utility and force people to fill up on only one place. So, I think those are the real big benefits, but as far as the dollar amount, I think, you know, like I said, they look back at the history, and I think that this is kind of the sweet spot. They think if it proves we're getting hammered in the future, we can always adjust.
Just to follow up, if I could, so if something that obviously is going to be a hammer, whatever you want to call it, and we realize that's going to happen, is there something that, or are we stuck with the two hundred dollars and it's something that's going to cost a lot more? Do we have a way out on that case?
Mr. Yerben.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only exception to the two hundred dollar fee that I'm aware of right now is we are excluding Division of Forestry from that because they have to fill from a hydrant down close to the site on the airport, and we will continue to meter that. You know, I think fortunately for us, if we get in a situation where we know a big project's coming up, the flexibility of the fee schedule actually allows me to make adjustment and bring it to council after the fact if we needed to, or we can bring it by resolution. So, I think we can, we're pretty nimble in our ability to make adjustments if we see a situation like that coming up.
Councilmember Dothan.
So, as a matter, are we going to be eliminating the water meter rental or checkouts?
Mr. Yerben.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Dothan. I believe the intent is to just provide a key to the payers of this fee that allow them to access the one hydrant, which is over by the old, or the new city shop, to actually fill. So, yes, there will be no meter. We won't have to check meters out to people, try to track people down for meters after the season, and so on and so forth.
I guess my biggest concern and the problem I see with this is the increased cost for the people doing the water. If you have a water hydrant in my lot, when I developed it, was prime example, we did the water meter. We have a water meter, we have a hydrant right next to our facility. We were able to put a meter on there, use it for the dirt work as we needed it for compaction. It would have been a very large expense for me to have to pay the fee for the water, but then the trucking fee alone would have been tenfold in an expense at a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars an hour probably for a water truck to drive that distance for development. I see that as being one reason why I think people are going to be a little unhappy with this, if they have to truck the water to their job site and see those increased expenses and time hours. I could see it working in some instances, but I also see it be a detriment for contractors going to have to charge more. I mean, if they're doing work on Wildwood or Lilac area, and they're having to go to the airport, you know, your thirty, forty minutes round trip plus fill time to get one truck back and forth, you're exponentially increasing costs. That's my concern on this.
Further questions, comments?
I was just going to speak to your round trip and fill time. The other thing that's driving this is D E C by water laws. We, for inspections and legalities feeding off a hydrant, it has to have an R P Z meter attached to it, so a reduced pressure zone, and they are rather expensive. So, Sodana was going to this a few years ago, and that's one thing that we're driving, pushing this, so we don't have to do inspections on every single thing that ever, that comes to the city to fill up.
Councilmember Kusina.
I just wanted to say that I think I understand your point, Alex, and it makes sense in that context. I think maybe the benefit here is, it sounds like there's a lot of cost savings in this consolidation that might be more impactful to day-to-day taxpayers in the city of Kenai than the contractors, but I get your point, too. So, I appreciate the efforts to try to improve the efficiencies and overall cost of this.
I just, I have one question. Go ahead. Well, do you guys do, do you do inspections to make sure the trucks have air gaps and those sort of things that would be required?
Yes, that's what D E C requires, is we're supposed to inspect every vehicle that comes to fill, and when somebody runs out a hydrant meter, you'd never know what they're going to be filling with it. So, they're, just to resolve the unknown, one of the things that we moved forward with D E C was to purchase a backflow prevention hydrant meter that we could put on a hydrant and control, so that we'd make sure no water ever gets back siphoned into the system.
Very good. Councilmember Dothan.
So, would it be feasible for some of these larger contractors that might be bidding on projects that need water to not have to cause for trucking, would they be able to purchase their own meters and hook up if they meet D E C requirements for that? I'm just looking at, you know, road projects might be needing water every day, all day, for a long period of time, and that trucking fee gets really expensive in a hurry.
We were looking into it a bit. There's thoughts of possibly expanding it to another point out in the city at another time, but we just need to find a spot that's less impactful because one of the other things with people opening up hydrants is it can draw pressure down in the system, especially if the fire department's doing training on them at the same time, and a contractor just opens up a hydrant without telling anybody. So, there's that out there, too.
I've got one follow-up as well, is that I presume, is there some sort of a water use agreement or something that the person would sign that is using water? And the only thing I'm thinking of is that in times of where we would want restrictions, where, let's say, we're battling a fire or something in a certain part of the city where we wouldn't want anybody else drawing on the system, is that, are those provisions provided for?
Yes, we can rescind it at any time as states on there.
Okay. Further discussion? Vice Mayor Necht.
I guess we like talking about water tonight, but I was curious, maybe through the City Manager, I believe a fill station used to historically be at the afar end of Beaver Loop down there, and perhaps in the future could, I'm not sure if that was a bad idea, but in the future, for Mr. Dothan's concern, you know, that would, that's sort of another area of the city if we might be able to have one there, a fill station in that location of that area once again. But I don't know what our city pressures are.
Mr. Yerben, or Eric, either one?
So, the hydrant right outside of the water plant that used to be used as a fill station, I don't know how it will react. Once we put the new pump house in place, but as of right now with the old pumps and after the, it was designed and retrofit and the new water plant built on the property, that it does a very significant water hammer, and the hydrant if turned on will actually jump up and down in the ground.
I guess my concern on this is just the impact we're going to have with contractors that are going to be bidding on projects in our city are going to have to retroactively charge back to the city for road time for hauling water from this one station. And I'm wondering if there just could be as simple as, you know, maybe a hybrid style where we do have a few of the new meters, we charge more to rent the meters that are D E C approved for some of the areas, if you're not within such a radius of the one fill station. I just see it costing, I mean, we're talking about maybe saving the city, but we're paying for inspections now for labor on these individuals to inspect the trucks, and we're going to be paying for, and it might just be time for us to look at it, but we're going to be paying for it in the projects within the city for cost increases for bids is where I see it not being a cost savings. That's my concern, is going all or nothing. Is City of Sodana is making it work with new meters? Can we do a hybrid possibility, or I'm just not sure on that?
We could probably look into it. The new style of R P Z meter that is out there is roughly two hundred pounds, so it's not something easily totaled around either, and you can't just connect it to a hydrant and let it hang there because it'll, the weight of it will pull the hydrant. So, it has to be set up with another post to balance it out. So, there's other things to look at like that. It's just not an easy one to move around.
I understand, and I'm just thinking, sorry to talk about, but say we got a job on Wildwood Drive, and they're going to be doing a lot of hauling, and they're going to repave all summer, for most of the summer. That's a ton of water moving back and forth in trucks that's going to be billed back to the city and could be add up to thousands of dollars, whereas if we had one of those meters in a long-term project, we look at that, okay, we're going to have one or two of these meters available for long-term projects that, you know, not having, having that option might be something to look into. That would be my wish and concern on this, is to change this drastically and not have an option.
I guess what I'm looking at here is this, by us approving this resolution, I think it still gives administration some flexibility to, this is regarding the fee and the change for that, to, you know, look at opening up other stations. It sounds like that's your main concern of points of where you can collect the water. I get that. So, I think, I would, I would think that with what we're doing, just by changing the fee, it still allows administration to be able to react to that.
Yes, and I agree, having this as an option, another tool in the tool belt is great, but I don't want to, I want to reiterate my concern for having possibility of some stationary meters that we can remove would be cost prohibitive, uh, cost productive? I can't remember how to say it, but anyway, something like that, yes. I think it would be important to consider other options besides only this as a fix, so that was my concern. I understand the two hundred dollar fee, and I think it's important, but I think there ought to be other options, too.
Councilmember Kusina.
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to continue to talk about water. I don't know, Don, about road projects and water needs, so maybe this is just a general question from my understanding. Do road projects require water from D E C approved water hydrants, or can they come from ponds, or are there other water source projects can use other than just our city water sources?
Yeah, they can, they, it's usually if there's a lake, it's, there's an A D F N G permit that's required for those to draw, but where there's no water, like, I don't think that would even be required of Dobbin's Pond, but yeah, you can grab other water sources. Vice Mayor Necht.
Well, since we're going to take this full circle and then another circle, I mean, in a road project, if we're going to talk about Wildwood Drive, you know, a water truck's going to be sitting out there waiting for the trucks that are hauling material away to somewhere distant, and then waiting for the trucks and the lines of trucks coming from wherever that material source is to bring it out there. The water is certainly a component of the cost of the project, but it's not a huge part. And there is a lot of water, but there's a whole lot more material, it's a whole lot more, a lot more other costs, and, but, you know, it, like the mayor suggested, is that, or it's in the, it's in the purview of the city to be able to maybe alter where they may take water, depending on where that project might be. So, anyway, I think we're talking about a simple fee changes at this point, anyway.
Further discussion? United House of Consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number 2025 dash twenty-four is adopted. That brings us to E six, Resolution 2025 dash twenty-five, authorizing award of the contract to use crane's offices and operation area at the boating facility. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Necht.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025 dash twenty-five, requesting unanimous consent.
I'll second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number 2025 dash twenty-five? Seeing nobody in line or online or in chambers, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Vice Mayor Necht.
Yeah, thank you. Question for the City Manager, the crane that's in that facility, does that, has that been used in the last couple of years for fishing or other uses, too? And how will that, if so, will that conflict, be a conflict with the operation?
Mr. Yerben.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Necht. So, the agreement that we're proposing to enter into with Western Marine is the same agreement we've used the last three, four, or five years with Pac Star. It provides non-exclusive use of the city dock. This is in support for their, they're going to need fueling activity and be able to access their barges by a boat. That's the intent with them this year. It's non-exclusive, so the last few years, we've had by special use permit, a number of fishermen that have paid a fee of one thousand dollars a year to have access to the cranes on the dock for unloading their personal fish. There should, there should be no impact or disruption to that. It's, you know, I think it's going to take some coordination with the contractor, but I think, you know, I think it certainly, we envision it should be the same, and we just thought it was important this year to extend that to Western Marine in support of that project while construction takes place in some.
Further discussion? United House of Consent requested, yes, United House of Consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number 2025 dash twenty-five is adopted. That brings us to Resolution Number 2025 dash twenty-six, excuse me, authorizing the City Manager to enter into an agreement with the City of Sodana to continue providing animal shelter services for the City of Sodana at the Kenai Animal Shelter. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Necht.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025 dash twenty-six and requesting unanimous consent.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number 2025 dash twenty-six? Seeing nobody in chambers or online, we'll bring it back to council. Deliberation, comments from council? Seeing, just, just out of curiosity, you might have this in here. I apologize if I didn't catch it. What, how many years have we been doing this? Mr. Yerben.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This will be the fifth, so June thirtieth will be the end of the fifth year. So, the first agreement was for three years with two one-year extensions by mutual consent. So, this is substantially the same structure. It will be a new three-year agreement with the option to extend, extend again for two one-year periods by mutual consent.
Very good. So, it sounds like it's working well. That's, I think, the point is on it. Perfect. Thank you. Any further discussion? United House of Consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number 2025 dash twenty-six is adopted. That brings us to Item H ten, action approval, confirmation of mayoral nomination for a partial term appointment of Genie Reveal to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Necht.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I move that we confirm the mayoral nomination of Genie Reveal to the Planning and Zoning Commission and requesting unanimous consent.
Second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I would like to, I know, to discuss on this. I think we should open it up for some discussion, just clarification questions if we can on this.
Sure.
I just would like to, I know we received emails and stuff, and I just want to have Mayor have an opportunity to discuss it for us with the decision on this. I guess just be time to explain what your feelings were and why you were nominating and moving forward, Miss Reveal, over the other applicants.
So, we had, as you know, Commissioner Joe Halsted retired, left, and that left a partial term of his, which is roughly half of his term, which is about a little over a year and a half. So, this, he goes to January of twenty, or December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six, I believe is what the term is. At any rate, Miss Reveal had put, she serves on her harbor commission, she served, was appointed on unanimously, was confirmed November eleventh, or November first of twenty twenty-three, and she put in her application, I had that on my desk, and I had no problem putting her through because, you know, I did have another applicant that's in our packet from Bridget Grimmy, who I also appointed to a commission, she's on Parks and Rec Commission, she's been serving since January fifteenth, I believe, or January of this year, so she just is fairly recent appointee, and, so I don't have any issue with any, either one of the people that put in their application. Miss Reveal has served a little longer, about a year and a half. She's performed her duties, she's been to every meeting, every work session, she's been pretty analytical with her thinking, and I know Planning and Zoning, especially as a commission that, you know, we want to have, it's an interesting commission because it's kind of quasi-judicial. It's a commission that I think, I didn't think she would have any problem with, with serving on it. That being said, it's a partial term, so she'll be able to just finish out this term and see how she does. It's in, like a discussion I had with her, it's sort of like, you know, how would you do? I have full faith that she would be able to perform the duties, and that's why I put in her. I do give deference, as many people on this commission, on this council have served on commissions that I appointed and were, I think almost everyone unanimously confirmed that they did their duties and did well on those commissions. So, I do give deference to, you know, that type of service and how long they do that. So, I didn't have any, nothing against Miss Grimmy at all. She turned in a good application, and I would definitely consider her in the future for that role. I hope that answered your question.
Okay. Yeah, I would just, you know, with all this, I was looking at code, and I was just looking for the qualifications and merits of both applicants and... was just looking for the qualifications and merits of both applicants and, um, you know, length of service in the community and community involvement. And, and with the applicants, based on that, that's where I was wondering what the qualifications and merits were based on and what, what your thought process was on that, for clarification. Um, the one, one thing that did come up that I was kinda surprised about was before last meeting, on the second, I was informed that Ms. Reveal was already being moved forward before it had been closed. By, is that some, is it just usually like a first come per serve, or how do, is it just the first applicant that comes in? I'm just kinda wondering-
No, it's not. And I was asked by the, the clerk who, if I would consider moving her forward, which, like I said, considering her, her, um, service on the harbor commission, she's now the chair of that commission, that, um, that I felt fairly confident with, well, confident with moving her nomination forward. Once I found out that there was another, and normally when we get these, and it's probably my fault, I agree, because a lot of times when we get these applications or, um, applicants for these certain commissions, they trickle in. We don't get a big, you know, rush of them. And it'd been open for a while, I got her application on March 27th. Um, and I was made aware, um, that, and I think it was Mar, April 2nd or something, that I had talked to the clerk about moving her forward. The deadline was April 8th. The clerk let me know that it was April 3rd, on April 3rd, the next day, that there was another applicant. So, I paused to wait till the deadline before I, to consider each applicant, yes.
All right. I, I'm just looking for clarification.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I do want this to go to a vote, I think. I don't wanna go for unanimous on this. Um, just based on the applications that were turned in, um, and how they were filled out, I do feel that Ms. Grimmy has got more qualifications, more connection to the community, and, uh, and has more qualifications in that aspect, just reviewing the qualifications based on the, um, the applications that were turned in. So, my vote would be a no for this nomination, based on the two applicants and the applications that were there.
Further discussion, council, Vice Mayor Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, often we have, you know, more than one applicant, and the mayor gets to make the choice, and then, of course, we, we review it. And, uh, I might've had the same, you know, idea before, it was kind of a question, but, um, after receiving what I considered a very unprofessional email, um, that was somewhat inflammatory, I, um, I think that the mayor made the correct choice in this case. And, uh, I, you know, I think when the email, um, not only somewhat attacks the mayor, but also brings up the other applicants and compares themselves with them, I think if it's a, if it's an interview and you're, and you're discussing yourself, if that individual came here and said, "Hey, this is what I can do for you, can you consider me?" Or an email like that, I think I would've considered that at a much higher level than, you know, if, this email that we received. Just, I'm, I'm really put off by it, frankly.
Further discussion? Uh, Councilmember Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I, I mean, normally it's tough, you know, you get one, maybe two, and you gotta make a choice, and you approve it. And, so, yeah, it's great, we got somebody. Um, would it, is this time sensitive? Would it make sense maybe to just pause this and reopen that period to see if we can get a few more applicants we could look through, like, you know, treat it like a job and say, "Hey, we got, you know, a couple more and we can reevaluate"? Is that, is that an option for us tonight?
It, well, I guess I would defer to the clerk, um, but, go ahead. We can't, I know we can either vote on it, go ahead. Uh, Ms. Sainer?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. The code allows that the council may reopen the application period, um, and also allows that the council does not have to make the decision until the following meeting in which the mayor made the nomination. So, this can be postponed till the next meeting, or at this time, the council can make a motion to reopen the application period.
So, I would just point out that, um, Ms. Reveal would still be my nominee, considering who we have right now. And even at that, this is a, this is a partial term, and I, as I said before, and I've, and I've said this, this directly to Ms. Reveal, is that this is, you know, because of planning and zoning, um, you know, there, there's, it is different. It's a different commission, it's a different seat. And I understand those qualifications. And honestly, without, with anybody, you, you don't have 100% knowing what you're gonna get when you appoint them to that seat. Um, I feel confident in Ms. Reveal, but this is a, a year and a half, uh, uh, trial period. If she doesn't work out, then, then, or has something that would be contrary to, I guess, the vision of the city, whoever, me or whoever the mayor might be beyond me, then, uh, you know, she wouldn't get reappointed. So, um, and that would go, and, and that goes for everybody you, you appoint, but instead of a three-year term, it's a, excuse me, it's a one and a half year term. So, I, like I said, I, that's not gonna change my nominee, I would still move her name forward. I think she's, um, you know, she's been, uh, done her duties as a commissioner, um, which is, you know, like I said, I do give that a lot, about, a lot of weight, much like, uh, I can almost count on every, almost everyone on here who has served on a commission and, uh, have fulfilled their duties and, and now you're sitting here. So, um, at any rate, Councilmember Dalton?
I guess, I would just, I could see, just leaving it open, see if we get any other applicants, and reconsider this for the next meeting. I'd be willing to make a, a motion for that, so we'd have a timely opening for that. Just-
Yeah, you can make the motion.
I guess I'd make a motion to just make the final decision on this on next meeting, and see if there's any other, would it open up for other applicants then, or no?
Ms. Sainer?
Thank you. So, the mayor, we wouldn't have time to advertise and get applications by the next council meeting. We have to, first of all, it's too late to make this newspaper's advertising period, and then we would have to have all applications in by next Wednesday in order for it to make the following pack. Actually, no, we have a bonus week this month, don't we? Pretty sure we have a bonus week this month that there's no meetings on. So, we wouldn't be able to make an advertisement into the newspaper until the 25th, and it would still have a closing period of the 30th. So, that would not be sufficient time to actually recruit any new applicants.
So, I guess we couldn't do that within the next meeting time, but we could reopen it. Is that what I'm understanding?
Can we second it before we discuss?
Actually-
I'm just asking the question that-
Figure out which motion to make here.
Currently, we have a motion on the floor, and the motion is to confirm. So, before we can make any other motions, that one needs to be resolved, and then a motion to reopen can be made.
Which means we need a second?
On the motion to reopen. We have a motion and a second on the floor right now.
Is there a second?
Yes. Councilmember Sonar seconded the motion to confirm.
Oh, but I thought Mr. Dalton just made a motion to, was, or was that just a question?
Right. Parliamentary-wise, we have a motion on the floor. We cannot, we can, cannot propose a new motion until the current one is voted on and brought back-
Yes, very good.
-to a conclusion.
Okay.
Don't fall off my ladder.
Okay. Vice Mayor Naxted?
I just, a question for the clerk, the process. Um, you kind of explained part of it, but could you kind of explain the, how the nomination part goes, and, and when somebody's confirmed, and when you notify people of whether they're, they've been accepted or not? Is, does that hap, it can't happen before we, we, you know, we actually have the meeting?
Correct. So, if, okay, there's several balls in motion here. Um, what we have right now is a, is a motion on the floor that can be amended or it can be postponed. To entertain a completely new motion, this one needs to be resolved. If the application period is reopened, the same thing, the applications will go for, forward to the mayor, the mayor will select his nomination and bring forward to council for confirmation. And that is the process that we use. We do not notify the applicants that they were not selected because that's not our office's choice. We wait until conclusion by the council to send the letters of appointment or not appointment.
Ms. Sainer, uh, maybe I'm mistaken. Um, I think I remember seconding the original resolution. I don't remember seconding the new motion that Ms., the councilman-
Yeah, that's correct, Ms., yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Sonar.
That's correct. I will clarify, the motion on the floor now that was moved by Councilmember Naxted and, Vice Mayor Naxted, I'm sorry, and Councilmember Sonar, seconded by Sonar, was confirming the mayoral nomination for a partial term appointment of Jeannie Reveal to the planning commission.
So, we need to vote that up or down before we move on? Okay. So, we need to keep the discussion regarding the nominee. Very good. Councilmember Dalton?
I'm just confused. So, we have to vote up or down? If, if the nomination goes ahead, then there's no reopening, correct?
That's correct.
But if we vote it down, then we can vote to reopen it and still reconsider the nomination at the next, after the end of the next closing period, correct? Or-
The motion, okay.
I see what I'm saying, it's like-
So, the motion could be to postpone this out to a farther date, and then the motion to reopen the nomination. This, I don't see amending, you can't amend this to reopen the, the motion that's on the floor can't be amended to reopen the application period.
So, we could postpone this certification of this nomination while we reopen the nomination? And then postpone this to be able to allow that reopening to close, just to see if we get any other applicants?
It doesn't seem parliamentary correct in process, because, like I said, we have a motion on the floor. This goes up or down, and you're correct. If it passes, then reopening the, is, is, is not, it's pointless. If it doesn't pass, then reopening is the next option.
And postponing doesn't make any difference because we wouldn't have a reopening for any other applicants?
Correct.
So- Councilmember Daniel?
I'm, I'm sorry, another question by clerk. If we postpone indefinitely, would that cancel it away?
That would take it off the floor.
Then what happens?
Then you can move to reopen the application period.
Okay. So, I move to postpone this indefinitely.
I guess I'll second. Discussion on the motion? Vice Mayor Naxted?
I will be voting against that. I think we just need to vote this, the question up or down. And basically, that's what you're, what you're testing. So, so we're just gonna do it in two steps.
Further discussion? Uh, Councilmember Casana?
You know, it's not just water that I'm interested in talking about. Uh, I'm, I'm just curious, mainly just to play devil's advocate here, how many mayor appointments have we received with more than one candidate where this body discussed the mayor's appointment?
I believe the last time was 2011. And there is, oftentimes, we do get more than one applicant. However, the mayor in my tenure here has brought forward the incumbents, and they have been reappointed. This is a vacancy with nobody in it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Daniel?
So, just to be clear, the reason is, you know, why I'm proposing this is, I mean, I wasn't, it seemed like it was a very short period, and we got two decent applicants, and it would be nice to just reopen and see else we get. And if it comes back, and we don't get anything, it is what it is. It doesn't seem like it's time-sensitive to me, and if it is, please correct if I'm wrong, um, for it to go another couple of weeks. But that's the reason why I would like to, to postpone this, so we can try to get a few more applicants in there and then make, make a decision at that point. Um, I didn't hear about it, and I might've missed it, and I apologize if I did, but it'd be, it'd be nice to see what's out there.
Further discussion? I'd like to say that I, I oppose this. Obviously, I think that we owe it to, um, you know, like I said, even if we postpone it, she, I wouldn't have any reason to not, um, considering her, you know, like I said, her history of, of, you know, commission, uh, work that she's done. She's not missed a meeting or a work session. Um, she's, uh, wanted to be, um, invested a little more in her community with planning and zoning. So, I think we owe it to her to, uh, vote up and down right now, and, and the will of the body, that's how the process works. Um, I guess by saying you wanna postpone that, you, you maybe don't, and to other applicants, that you're sort of saying that, you're saying neither applicant is qualified. And, and, so, with that, I'll, go ahead, Councilmember Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Okay, I guess, I, that's fair, and I appreciate that, um, discussion. So, uh, I guess I will rescind that, uh, 'cause it sounds like I'm just just delaying the, and did I do that right? Can I remove my motion? I'm withdrawing my motion.
You're withdrawing your motion, we need consent of the second.
Okay. Uh, I'm going to propose the, uh, move to withdraw my motion at this time.
Did I hear correctly that I need to say consent of the second to a cross?
You have to agree with the withdrawal, 'cause it's second, it's actually on the floor, it belongs to both of you at this point.
If anything, this is some really good parliamentary regulation practice. Uh, I agree to rescind my second.
Okay. Then the motion is withdrawn.
Okay, thank you. So, we're back to the original main motion to confirm Ms. Reveal as a, for a partial term on planning and zoning? Uh, Vice Mayor, okay, sorry, Councilmember Dalton?
Um, well, I guess, based on the applications, I mean, the really, what I keep hearing is the qualification for this that stands out is that Ms. Reveal has been on harbor for the last year and a half. I haven't anything else that says there's a bunch of other experience or community connections or, or anything like that. So, my, my vote is still gonna be no, so I don't think we can do the unanimous consent. But that's just what I've seen online, so.
Councilmember Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, I don't really know either applicant, um, just by name, and, uh, I, I too, I would be a no vote, just because I look at these applications, and if I was picking for a job interview, I would, just by looking at it, you know, this other applicant seems to be more qualified. Um, again, that's why, you know, I originally thought we should try to get some more applicants in here, but it sounds like I'm delaying the inevitable, so we'll, we'll vote it.
Further discussion? Clerk, please call, oh, Councilmember Sonar?
Just because it's late, and I'm pretty much sure I'm in the right lane, I would like the clerk to read exactly what we are voting on, since there's been so many round robins here.
Thank you.
Ms. Sainer?
The motion before the council at this time is confirming the mayoral nomination for a partial term appointment of Jeannie Reveal to the Planning and Zoning Commission. A yes vote would appoint Ms. Reveal, and no vote would not follow, would not appoint Ms. Reveal.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Daniel?
No.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Dotit?
No.
Councilmember Casana?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Student Representative Tanner?
Yes.
You have five yes votes and two no votes. Ms. Jeannie Reveal is appointed to Planning and Zoning Commission for a partial term.
Thank you. Next up, we have commission, commission reports, council on aging commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think the last meeting, I told you they weren't gonna have one, but they, but they did. They changed their mind. And, uh, they, uh, they met on April 10th, um, and they discussed and recommended amongst themselves committee appointments for their work plan. And, uh, it was, you know, often, you know, groups will, uh, establish work plans and all that, then nobody wants to do it, but they were all, all about it, and everybody wanted to help, and, and they have more, multiple people working on it. So, that, that should go well. They also had a discussion item, um, on our last meeting, the Kena Peninsula Housing Initiative presentation, that was, uh, was, uh, recorded here, and that was presented, uh, to the council on aging. And, uh, there was some, quite a bit of discussion on the, on where it was and what they were gonna do and all of that, but they were quite, quite in support of, of the donation in the end. And, uh, and, uh, that was the end of their meeting, and, uh, they canceled their May 8th meeting, so the next meeting will be in June.
Thank you. Airport Commission?
That's me. Uh, let's see, Airport Commission, I'll keep it brief, met on the 10th as well. Uh, had a couple items on the agenda. We discussed, they discussed the, uh, and I'll send it for us, recommendation- We discussed- they discussed the, and I'll send it for us, recommendation, airport fuel flowage fee to put that, get it out of the code and put it into the charts for fees, make it easier to manage. The other thing that was up for recommendation was the renewal for the permit for the fishing grounds LLC, which I think was on our consent agenda tonight. That was awesome. Got that done. And then another council recommendation for a special-use permit for the State of Alaska Division of Forestry for their 30,000 square feet of space for aircraft loading and parking. And that is what the Airport Condition- Commission discussed, and the next meeting is on the 8th of May.
Thank you. Harbor Commission?
Yeah, Harbor Commission met on the 7th. We had some public comment from Robert Peterkin and Tom Pelgram about the potential to build a city harbor outside of the river, closer towards the multi- the outdoor multipurpose fields, the soccer field area. So that was a compelling discussion. The commission itself discussed their work plan and scheduled their dock site visit, their annual dock site visit. And then also, Ms. Reveal was appointed unanimously as the chair of that group in that meeting. And the next scheduled meeting is May 12th.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Commission?
Yes. They, we met, and then their discussion is their work plan. That's what they're working on right now and getting that approved. And then they'll be starting to do what goals they have for that and getting that finalized here very shortly. And then they have the- their master plan study, which they're discussed briefly about, and that's working forward as far as setting up meetings and getting that moving forward. So that's exciting.
Thank you. Planning and Zoning Commission?
Planning and zoning was canceled for lack of agenda items. The next meeting is the 23rd of April.
Thank you. Beautification Commission?
Beautification meeting lasted four minutes. We did not have a quorum, and their next meeting is the 13th of May.
Thank you. On our report of the mayor, I got a few things. First of all, I wanted to thank our finance director, Mr. Swarner, for his work that went into help with our audit. I know, you know, I meet with them every year, everybody- oh. No, we haven't got to council comments. That was just commission committee reports.
Sorry, sorry. I apologize.
Yeah, no, that's coming up, sorry.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So I want to say, you know, when you- if you guys, I know it's, you know, we kind of mention this every time when we have our audit, that, you know, the audit, that's under a council contract, so they actually work for us. So if you ever get the chance to go in and visit with them and see the work that they do, it is quite a heavy lift for them, what they, you know, going through and doing all their controls, and it's a lot of interaction with our finance department. So, you know, I know, you know, you look to my left here in all the years that I've been here with Terry as our finance director, we've always had those clean audits, and I'm glad to see that we're continuing on down that road with Mr. Swarner. So other things of note, I want to mention that, as some of you may have remember, a young gentleman in our community, A.J. Hall, that was a standout athlete for the Kenai Central High School in football, basketball, track, and also for the American Legion. He was just voted into the High School Hall of Fame 2025. So congratulations to him and the Hall family. I'd like to say I did attend the Debbie's Bistro grand opening, but the- did a ribbon cutting over there with the chamber, and there was quite a few people stacked up there. It was early, it was 10 o'clock on a Saturday, but a few people rolling in there to try it out and see what they had, so good luck to them. I look forward to the Triumph Theater Saturday, their grand opening, and then just wanted to wish everybody a happy Easter this Sunday. With that, we'll go to administration reports, City Manager, Mr. Shebang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Some staffing-ish, staffing reports here. We welcomed Marcus Lopez to the city. He started with the Kenai Fire Department on Monday. Mr. Lopez comes to us from southern end of the peninsula. I think he worked for Ketchumack Emergency Services. He's got about five years' experience as a firefighter, and he also has an AEMT and paramedic certification, so a great addition to the department. We do have a second firefighter that will be starting, I believe, the end of May, and I'll report on that when he does start with us. We closed our utility operator position. We actually made a job offer, and that job offer was accepted. I don't know exactly when the candidate's scheduled to start, but I think probably end of May, early in June, so glad we filled that one. Current recruitments, we have a dispatcher position open, and today, staff did attend the Kenai Peninsula Job Fair. It was over in the old Cars Mall. Some great exposure for, I know our police chief, our fire chief is over there, HR director. We had reps from Parks and Rec who were there recruiting to fill a lot of the summer positions and things, so it's a great opportunity to get out and meet a lot of people that are looking for work, too. So other projects going on, we have the storefront improvement program. Those applications, we received three applications, but the application period has been extended till May 2nd, so looking to get a few more applicants. I don't think with the available funds that are available or remaining, that three applications wouldn't be enough to exhaust that, so we're going to extend that application period, hoping to get a few more folks interested and sprucing up their storefronts here in town. In the last couple of weeks, I've met with two different developers regarding construction of affordable housing in the city, so some- a fair amount of interest there. We'll see where those projects go, but we had some good preliminary discussions. I did attend the last meeting of the Borough's Tourism Industry Working Group. They did produce a report. That report was not adopted at that meeting by the commission, so they are going to have to request an extension by the assembly and plan to hold another meeting in the future. I do believe that their proposed, that draft report may be available on the Borough's website. Chief Teague and I met with some representatives from the college, just preliminary discussions about feasibility of utilizing the college utilizing our fire training center for in fire program and in their paramedic program, which I think is some exciting conversation. I'd like to see where that goes, and I think it could be a really good fit over there for both the college and the city. I met with some representatives from HEA to talk about, HEA is in the process of doing some contingency planning in case, because of the pending gas shortage in Cook Inlet, and what will happen. I think this is years out, so this is not to alarm anybody, but they are looking at how they are going to react if they don't have sufficient gas. And talked about some city operations and some critical operations and how it might impact us, and I appreciate them reaching out to us and having that conversation, so. I am also very happy to report that the Bluff Project meeting that was canceled for this week has been rescheduled to April 30th at 6:00 p.m. at the visitor center. There will be members of the corps and the contractor there to give a little bit of overview for the community on the project and hopefully answer any questions. So I'm really happy that they were able to reschedule that. And I want to report to council that the rec center will be closed tomorrow and Friday. The gym floor in there was just refinished, as council may remember, but there were some errors in the lines that were laid out in the floor. The contractor took full responsibility. They're actually back. They've sanded the- they've completely sanded the floor down now and are getting ready to revarnish it. So it'll be closed, the entire facility will be closed tomorrow and the next day. The cardio and weight rooms will reopen on the 19th, but the gym area will remain closed through May 5th to allow that new lacquer to cure in there. So if you get any questions about that, that's what's going on in there. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Shebang. Councilmember Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Quick question. What time is the Bluff meeting? I missed that, I apologize.
Mr. Shebang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Daniel, 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Further questions, the City Manager? Seeing none, we'll go to, since the city attorney is not here this evening, we will go to our city clerk, Ms. Sanner.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Just business licensing for mobile food vendors is on the uptick. People are getting ready for summer and taxi licenses, so our office has been pretty busy with licensing lately, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions, the City Clerk? Seeing none, we'll go to additional public comments. Is there anybody from- public comments? Is there anybody from the public that'd like to address the council at this time? Okay, good. Seeing none, not good. We just got a- we got executive session after this, so it's got a little bit long, so. With that, we'll go to, we'll go to council comments. Councilmember Dalton?
A whole lot, the job fair was held today. Anybody had a chance to swing in there? It was a really good showing. There were more people, I mean, the last several years I've done that job fair as a booth, and it's been pretty slow. This year was more attendees than I've ever seen before with job seekers looking for employment, and I think that's a good sign. I think we've got a lot of people out there looking for either new jobs or first-time employment, and I think it'll be good for, as we have other open positions, for getting applicants in there. It was great to see, I guess, this is the first time in several years that Sohigh was able to bring a busload of 30 students over to the job fair to help participate in that and put in some applications, so it was great to see all those participants over there and see the parking lot plumb full, pretty much most of the day with people coming and going, and really show that their community is looking for, to get out there and get employment. So that was, that was great to see, so, thanks.
Student Representative Tanner?
All right. For Connections Homeschool, from now until May 19th, Connections students will have artwork displayed at the Soldatna City Council Chambers. On April the 22nd through the 25th is the Scholastic Book Fair, and on the 29th of April is the elementary music class at their office. Connections would like to extend a special congratulations to sophomore Shielin Tanner, who won the statewide TrigStar competition and will be competing in the national competition in May. For Kenai Central High School, on April 17th is a boys' and girls' junior varsity soccer versus Homer High School. On April 17th through 18th is boys' varsity baseball at Kodiak High School. On April the 19th is a varsity track meet at Homer High School. On April the 21st is boys' junior varsity baseball at Soldatna High School. On April the 23rd is boys' varsity soccer versus Ketchikan High School. On April the 24th through the 26th is the Kenai Invitational Cup Tournament for Soccer at KCHS, the Rally in the Valley Softball Tournament, and the girls' university and varsity soccer tournament at Homer High School. On April the 25th is a boys' junior varsity and varsity baseball versus Homer High School. And on April the 25th through the 26th is a Wassila Invitational Track Meet. On April the 28th is boys' junior varsity and varsity baseball at Soldatna High School. On April the 29th is boys' and girls' varsity soccer versus Nikiski High School. On May the 1st is boys' junior varsity baseball at Colony High School, girls' varsity softball at Reddington High School, and boys' and girls' varsity soccer at Wassila High School. On May the 2nd is boys' and girls' varsity soccer at Reddington High School and boys' junior varsity and varsity baseball at Reddington High School. On May 2nd through 3rd is a varsity track meet at Soldatna High School. On May the 3rd is girls' junior varsity and varsity softball at Houston High School, boys' and girls' junior varsity university soccer versus Soldatna High School, and boys' junior varsity and varsity baseball at Palmer High School. And finally, on May the 6th is girls' junior varsity and varsity softball versus Soldatna High School and boys' junior varsity baseball at Soldatna High School.
Okay, you know it's coming, right? Mr. Tanner, you know it's coming, right? Jenlin Tanner, is that your sister? You can, you can say that after you say my sister. Well, she's very accomplished. Appreciate you guys. Councilmember Da- or Sonar, rather. I got you.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Tomorrow at Sohigh is the district solo and ensemble competition for all of our Peninsula students, and I want to wish our student musicians that are participating in that tomorrow good luck. That is the, if they get their superior rating tomorrow, then they'll be eligible to go next month to OSAS state championship, so. And then just happy Holy Week, everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Askin?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Thanks to the finance department for all your hard work, as all of our departments work hard. Almost as cool as Water Hammer is Free Water Knockout. That's even better. And all this water talk was appropriate with our weather today. Happy Easter, everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniel?
You're short and sweet. Have a great Easter holiday, everyone, and a good night.
Councilmember Casena?
I don't have anything to say this evening either.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Naxton?
Thank you. I wanted to thank our finance director, Dave Swarner, for the clean audit, and your staff. Thanks. Much appreciated, and I am too looking forward to the Triumph Theater open house on Saturday at noon.
Very good. With that, we'll go to item M, executive session. Vice Mayor Naxton?
Thank you, Mayor. I moved to enter into executive session to review and discuss the city clerk's evaluation, which may be a subject that tends to prejudice the reputation and the character of the city clerk per AS 4462310C2. Ms. Sanner has elected to have the discussion take place in executive session. The executive session will include Mayor Gabriel, city council. City Clerk Sanner will be included when the city council requests her presence, requests unanimous consent.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, you know, as council was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, we're now convened into executive session.